All right, good evening. In our supervisor's absence, I will be conducting the meeting tonight and we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, it's not on the agenda, but I do have a supervisor's report here. It's a revised one, so I will read that, provided in our packet here, guys. And I had the, and this is as of January 31st, 2014. And it is the grand totals, I'll read that. Opening balance, $2,622,175.31. Dispersed, $332,041.58, leaving us a balance of $2,403,661.58. I don't believe we have any budget adjustments. Just a normal interest statement.
Yes, two months' worth here.
Yeah, this is a February one.
That's the January written, that doesn't have a summary. February does.
Oh, 'cause January was revised.
Right. January was revised, so... Do I hear a motion to accept the revised January one as read?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And yes, this is the February 28th one. I'll read that now, and I do believe there's no budget adjustments for that one, so it's just year-to-date interest statements and so on. So, as of February 28th, 2014, the opening balance was $2,403,661.58. Receipts, $324,866.87. Dispersed, $272,658.12, leaving us a balance of $2,455,870.33. And there being no budget adjustments, I will entertain a motion to accept...
Motion to accept.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, so... That gets that out of the way. Sue, do you have a report?
Uh, no.
No, you don't? Yeah, I did, this is just the last... Yeah, I know that, I didn't... So then, as far as announcements, I have one in the front of my packet, which is to come learn about highway shared services study. The public kickoff meeting will be Wednesday, April 2nd, from 7:30 to 9:00 PM, right here at Red Hook Town Hall. That's to thoroughly inform the public about our highway shared services study that we're going to do. And that is the only thing I have here for an announcement. Any of you guys have any announcements to my right?
Well, we wanted to congratulate the Red Hook High School boys' basketball team for their success this year, and the coaching staff, and the fans, and the community. There was, I think, as many as 800 members of the Red Hook community who went to Glens Falls for the Final Four competition.
That is really nice.
It was wonderful. Although Red Hook lost, but the team that beat them also lost the next round. But anyway, congratulations to the school for their success.
But just getting to Glens Falls is quite a feat.
Yes. Very, very proud of the, made the community very proud.
Now, I have a meeting.
Brenda?
Yeah, I have a couple. Red Hook Can, that's Red Hook Community Artists Network, is having, sending out an SOS for volunteers, so if you're interested in doing such things like gallery sitting, go to their website at rhcan.com. Also, the library is sponsoring Job Search 101, so I thought this sounded really great. It's the first and third Tuesdays of the month, from 3:00 until 6:30. You get a 45-minute appointment and resume help, also online job searching help and writing an application, so contact the library if you're interested in that. And a couple of save the dates, Arbor Day is April 26th, the village and the town committees will be planting trees. If you're interested in getting involved, just call the village or the town halls. And save the date of May 4th for the annual Tour de Red Hook family bike ride sponsored by our Greenway and Trails Committee. That's it.
And that's it? Okay. And Susie, do you have any announcements?
Nothing to mention.
Okay. Then, from that point, I will go to the first item on the agenda. As you can see, we have a short agenda this evening, which is nice, and that's Route 9G safety concerns. Brenda, want to speak to us about that?
Yeah, just a little bit. I wanted to give the board members an update, because Sue Crane and I have been attending meetings on this topic. We've attended two meetings, and at both meetings, elected officials from the state, the county, and the local governments were present. The State Department of Transportation was there, Bard representatives, and also Winnicke Land Trust. And everybody was there, because there's been heightened concern. Of course, everyone knows about our tragic accidents that cost three young lives, and with a lot of interest now in the safety of the intersection of 9G and Broadway in Tivoli, there's been some, a lot of, actually, a lot of action. And so, with respect to action items that have happened, starting at the state level, this has been in the paper, so you've probably read this already, if I can find the announcement. But we got an official announce, press release Friday, that there will be a flashing light installed at the intersection of 9G and the West Curly Corners and Broadway roads. And they, the state will have that accomplished by Memorial Day weekend, so we want to thank them for that effort. But also, other action items that people may not have heard about are that the state is also going to have accomplished by summer, the widening of the shoulders of Route 9G from 199, the intersection with 199 north to the Columbia County line. They'll be four feet wide now, and right now, if you notice, they're pretty beat up. And the state wanted us to know that this was actually not in direct response to these accidents, but it was already in their work plan. And the way they'll get some of the space for the four-foot wide shoulders is by decreasing the driving lanes in each direction by one foot. So I think they're starting that in the spring, but will be done by the summer.
That'd be interesting, because the driving lanes aren't overly wide now in that stretch of the road.
I think they're 12, they're going to 11.
They've been out there surveying in the last couple of weeks, going driving on that road a few times a day usually. Surveyors are there.
In fact, at one of the meetings, Assemblyman Cade Hill was very interested in examining an off, separated multi-use path where the bikers and pedestrians would be offset from the road. So I think he actually took some action on that, looking into the cost, et cetera. Then, on the local level, the Greenway and Trails Committee and the Tivoli Greens Committee have been working with Bard and the DEC to make improvements to the trail that runs through Tivoli Bays from Kid Lane to the Fisher Center. And that should happen this year. Bard and the DEC are going to provide the labor and the materials, and I believe they're going to look at our, look to our local volunteer committees to do a little bit of maintenance. So stay tuned on that one, but that should happen this year. And then Bard College, of course, is working on some techniques to better define this corridor. Not only is the intersection of concern, but also the corridor that goes from Broadway and Tivoli all the way south. And so, it's been mentioned and by the Transportation Department, the best way to change driver habits is to change the context of the road. So a lot of the things that are happening and being discussed would try to do that. So Bard is thinking about better defining their entrance and the area where the college land borders 9G by planting trees close together, or by having banners hung that defines it as a college area. So there's a lot going on, and it's not, I mean, everybody's concerned, but actually people are acting, which is really nice to see. And there's some things brewing, which we can't announce yet, but within a month or so, we should be able to have more progress, and Sue and I will keep you all updated. I think that's enough.
Well, that sounds very positive, Brenda.
Yeah.
On all counts, thank you, yeah.
Sorry to try.
Okay. At that point, I believe we're going to the board reports now, unless anyone else has anything else to add before we start that.
I have something.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, everybody, for the public comment, Bob, I'm sorry.
But I have been doing stories about the road wide and all that stuff, and we've been getting, you guys have been getting one story about how wide the shoulders are going to be, and I keep getting a different story from DOT, and he told me that my, what he told me is that they're going to retain the 11-foot width with three-foot shoulders. And I asked him 12 feet, you know, I heard 12, they're going to reduce it to 10 or whatever, and then with four-foot shoulders, and he said the contract states that it's 11-foot, feet wide with three-foot shoulders. Okay? So this is, because I have to write this stuff.
Right.
You know?
You want it accurate in your, in the newspaper, correct.
I sort of gave the guy hell. I said, you know, the people at the meeting that you were at said 12 feet, you know, four-foot shoulders or whatever.
No, 12, 12 down to 11.
12 down to 11 with four-foot shoulders. And I said, well, which is it? And then I heard from someone else, it was different. And he told me in no uncertain terms that it's 11 feet with three-foot shoulders. So I said, are you sure? Because it makes us both look stupid if, you know...
So it's a total of either 14 or 15 feet, we're not sure.
So it's three-feet shoulders, not four-foot shoulders.
I heard four-foot shoulders, but I heard that from Brenda.
And she heard it from, you heard it from the DOT rep at the meeting.
Yes.
That's what I heard from the deputy mayor of Tivoli last week.
And you actually spoke to him, Bob, so you could write an accurate article.
And I spoke to this guy even before that, and he told me 11-foot through it, because I think Sue thought it was...
To the DOT, you spoke?
Right. I spoke to them three times, and he says, it's in the contract, I checked, it's 11-feet, three-foot shoulders. I said, okay, so I can write that? He says, yes, you can write that. I said, I've already written it once, but... And when I actually wrote it, two weeks ago, that's when Jeff Griffith, I guess, the deputy mayor of Tivoli, said, well, I heard, you know, 12-foot or 11-feet with four-foot shoulders.
He was at the same meeting?
Yeah, no, he said that, and so I got really upset.
You'll have to use the word maybe.
Well, yeah, well, no, I don't want to use maybe. I want to have the facts. So I don't know, I'm just saying this is going to be in the next story.
So it sounds like it'll be either 11 and 3, or 11 and 4?
No, he told me it's 11 and 3.
12 and 3. Yeah, we agree on the 11.
We agree on the 11. So now, I'm just saying, I'm just saying to you that maybe you should call.
I will.
Well, we'll work it out, little steps, at least we're going to have the light...
At least they're doing something.
On the Curly Corners intersection.
Yeah. Well, the flashing light is good, I just don't understand why there's not a stoplight. And I asked him, and he gave me that old spiel about the study they did.
Well, you know, small steps.
I think it's because of the approaches are on hills, right?
Well, you know, I never think about it, because I'm so familiar with that intersection for 50 years, but somebody that isn't as familiar, it can be hazardous.
You'd usually be doing 60 when you, when you come up, when you come down that hill and hit that dip where you can't see the intersection.
If you're not watching, you can, Harry, yeah.
Well, I was coming back from there just about a half an hour ago, because I had to go to board, meet a workshop thing on the budget, and some guy, I'm going the proper speed, 45, into Annandale, and some guy just, you know, when there's a double rounded hill of light, he just passed me. He didn't want to wait for me, you know? So you've got that kind of driver, too. They're in a hurry. Where they're going, I don't know.
Yes. Probably texting in a hurry or something like that.
Yeah, that's what I think sometimes, and I...
But, you know, but little steps. It wasn't that many years ago, 199 and 9G was a flashing light.
But we put pressure on them.
I remember that forever.
Between you guys and everybody else, and maybe some of the things I wrote, too, and whoever else wrote stuff, I think it did a lot of...
Well, just this conversation, the article, they might settle the confusing issue for us, so...
Okay, so that's all I want to say, because I just wanted to let you know what I was told.
Are there any other public comments that I had skipped over accidentally before? I know Hank's going to be talking to us in a couple minutes. No other, there being no other public comments, then I will go into the board report at this point. Ethics, I don't believe they've met. Does anyone have anything from the ethics?
They haven't met.
They haven't met, right? Planning Board, I've got something in my thing here, unless you have something, Brenda, I'd like to read it, I just, it was in a packet here. It says, this is March 2014. Since the last planning board report in September 2013, the board has approved three new business projects. Plimpton and Hills Plumbing, everyone knows where that is, the Red Hook Diner, and From the Ground Brewery. The board continues to review two major subdivisions, the Preservate Lakeskill and Anderson Commons. Both projects are currently still in the public hearing phase. And the board has recently begun to review Bard College's application to construct a new parking lot on Olin Hill using green infrastructure. And the zoning board has not had a meeting, they had no business, so they don't have a meeting until early April. Now, the next item is department reports. I think I will go to the water department first, since Hank is kind enough to come here and give us all a report, if you guys don't mind me skipping around a little and letting Hank give us his presentation first.
Nothing new here, I guess. We had a water board meeting on the 19th, at which time, among a few other things, we discussed the Kirchhoff development on the Hoffman property, attending that meeting with Jim Ross and Harry, Rich Rang and Richard Barclay, and the water board. So what I wanted to do was, put together from the water board their recommendations regarding, recommendations to the town board regarding this development. So we did agree ultimately, as far as managing the district operations, the board thinks that the town should manage the district as we do the current District 1. Fire hydrants, they're not shown on the current maps, but Richard's sure that fire hydrants will be provided. At this time, they'll be essentially flushing hydrants, because there won't be enough water for fire flows, certainly if Rokeby is a provider, and maybe not even if the village of Red Hook is the provider. But they will be, there will be fire hydrants in some day, if we had adequate pressure and fire flows. Water main size, the water board believes that all the mains in that development should be eight-inch ductile iron. Some are currently showing a six-inch, some are eight-inch. Just to ensure adequate fire flows and to minimize pipe sizes, have all one-size pipe connections. Water main to Route 9, the board recommends that they develop or complete an eight-inch ductile iron pipe from the development to Route 9, and perhaps over to the hydrant on Route 9. Richard's sure that he doesn't intend to do that, but that's a decision for the town board to make, are they going to make that a requirement or not? If, if the village is to be the primary water supply for that development, and that's in the area, we think that, we're not convinced that the village has adequate water to supply their current needs, plus the Anderson development, plus the Hoffman development. I guess the health department is also not sure yet, okay? They're not in agreement. So what we think, in looking ahead beyond this current development, there's going to be a need for water, public water in that area, for the current businesses as well as new businesses. So we think that town should be, the village should agree, that the town should be a backup supplier, and that means that we should have a viable interconnect with the village, with the town. Currently, there is an interconnect which is not viable for a couple of reasons. Big reason is the size of the water mains in the village, and we also have a pressure. So what we think is there should be a couple of engineering studies, determine what's needed to provide, make a viable interconnect. One is, what's the route? How is the interconnection via conflict? Upgrading the existing interconnection or doing a new one? Those things are not cheap, but I think if the town wants to be able to provide water, sure water, at the end of the town here, they have to do it. The other study should be related to the capability of our, of the District 1 water supply to provide whatever number of gallons per day would be required. Now, we currently have a permit to buy 720 homes, that's from the health department, and we're current providing just under 500, about 40. So if we have some room in there, we'd probably have to amend the permits to, you know, to provide any significant amount of water. We might need an additional well, for example. So I think that's a study, what an engineering study should determine, those two things, the route for the interconnect and the adequacy of our water supply. Okay, that's about the end of it. As far as the recommendations are concerned, I just want to say that I was the dissenting vote on the, should the town manage the water. Not that I'm totally against it, but I think we need to know the town's long-range intentions. I mean, if they're going to have one little oddball development down there that the town's going to manage, that's not required. It should be integrated with, not integrated, managed by the Dutchess County Water and Waste Water Authority in conjunction with their system of Rokeby.
Was, were you the only, Hank, I thought that you guys were all in agreement on all issues, but I thought that one was like 4 to 3, or something like that.
My recollection was, there was one.
On that particular one, but the rest you were all in, yeah?
42, 1 abstained.
Is that what it was, 42, 1 abstained?
Yeah, I think it was 42 and 1 abstained. I think...
Oh, the county man?
Yes.
And that's just as, who will manage the district? Otherwise, you were pretty much all in unison on, yeah?
So, anyway, that's about it.
Well, did the water board make a recommendation about who would supply this development? Water?
No, that's, Richard can confirm, but the current plan is Rokeby, right? Current plan is perhaps either a connection just to Rokeby, or a connection to Rokeby as well as the village. They both indicated that they have some capacity to serve the project. I think Rokeby may have adequate supply. I don't know if they've been approved by the health department.
They have some supply to serve a portion of the project, but not necessarily the entire project.
Okay. All right, so the current health department hasn't approved them, or the village has the sole supply.
We haven't made an application yet.
Okay, well, they're still talking with the health department.
So at this juncture, I think it's for all of us, the town board, you know, when Sue gets back to look at your recommendations, for us to look at the whole issue, and then obviously come up with a decision from the board here, you know, based on our water boards that, you know, recommendations and so on, too, yeah?
And certainly you have the...
And then get, obviously, back to the developers as soon as we can.
We have to consider both the, both the Kirchhoff project and Rokeby, and including the whole TND.
Yes.
Right.
Which will require municipal water.
Yeah, there's no question.
One thing, I thought in the original discussions, when we had our first meeting...
Was that the municipal, intermunicipal task force?
The intermunicipal task force had a meeting when this was beginning to be discussed, and I believe then the supervisor and others recommended that our town water board meet and give a recommendation to the town board, as you have tonight in memo.
Yes.
There was a discussion, I think at that time, whether the village should be a part of that meeting, and I think they said, well, no, let's let the, let the town water board meet first. So shouldn't we set up a meeting with the village and the town water board and everybody again, to make sure we have the village at the table?
I suppose.
Because they weren't there when you...
No, they weren't.
We've spoken to them about it, and they seem to indicate that, you know, they were not invited, or they were invited, or, you know, that sort of thing. So I think it'd be good if we all get at the table, if that's...
They weren't here to the Friday meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Right, but not at the meeting...
Not at the town water...
And that was a discussion, that was rather broad discussion on the water, on that Friday morning.
And so was our water board discussion.
Because it seems to be a discrepancy whether the village has sufficient water or not.
Well, they think they do, they think they do. The health department does not yet agree. I talked with Jim Napoli, okay? They're talking different sets of numbers.
Now, what I...
The town's looking at one set of numbers, or the village looking at one set of numbers, and the town is looking at another set of numbers.
So we got to resolve that.
Yeah.
What I took from that meeting, and what you had contributed as well, Richard, that you had hoped to tie into Rokeby and most likely, as well as the village, I'm, from the developer's perspective, because you, at this juncture, without major improvements in either, they could each provide about 50% of your needs, was that correct?
They each have the ability to provide some of the capacity for the project, at least based upon the information that they've provided to us so far. The benefit of connecting at both ends is, and I think I described this in one of our previous discussions with the joint work board, with the, I'm sorry, the joint task force, was that by, Rokeby has two wells. A connection to the village, in essence, would be a third connection to the system. So water would be coming from both the two wells of Rokeby, as well as the village system, such that it can provide all the capacity necessary for the entire system. And based upon the design standards, the system has to be able to, the water supply has to be able to produce the maximum day demand, which is typically about two times an average day demand, with the largest well at its surface. So in looking at it from the perspective of, okay, if the connection to the village was considered to be the largest well, would the two wells at Rokeby still be able to provide capacity to Rokeby as well as the Hoffman project? And it's our contention that it will. Right now, those two wells, where the pumps that are in them are producing 26 gallons a minute, they do have the potential to produce a bit more than that, but even at 26 gallons a minute, it basically covers what we would need on a maximum day basis from those two wells. That's approximately 75,000 gallons a day those two wells produce.
Can they pump that rate 24 hours a day, multiple days?
Yes.
For when you've reached buildout?
That would, that would actually satisfy the entire project. One of the things that we, when the village initially indicated that they might not have capacity for us, we had, we had looked to Rokeby to see what we would need to do with Rokeby in order to be able to provide capacity, and we met with the health department. The health department's design standards are fairly strict in terms of how much flow we need to allocate to each home, very conservative numbers. We know that the Rokeby system is using less than half of what they're saying we have to use for design for the new homes, which is counterintuitive, you would think new homes are going to use less water than the existing homes. But that aside, even if we use the health department's design numbers for our project, Rokeby has the capacity today to serve approximately 26 units, 26 homes, in the Hoffman project. So one of the things that we had talked about is, we weren't sure when the village was going to be able to satisfy the health department with respect to the capacity that they have available. With that said, we looked into the possibility of processing our approvals application to get the entire site plan approved, but only filing the subdivision in phases. So perhaps that first phase would be the first 26 lots that Rokeby can service without any, any additional changes to the Rokeby system. During that process, we would be hopeful that the village would be able to demonstrate that they have adequate capacity to satisfy the health department, such that we can file the additional phases and build out the rest of the project. Alternatively, we would have to augment the supply from the Rokeby system. Does that make sense?
Needing fill another well?
Perhaps, yeah.
Okay. Good, well, thank you, Hank, and thanks, Rich, for bringing us up to speed on all of that.
Thank you all. So you'll be discussing, I guess, the recommendations at the next town board meeting, I guess, or...
I would imagine. Our supervisor will be back, yes, and that would be our intent, to discuss the recommendations and sometime in the not-too-distant future, come out with our recommendations in conjunction with our water board, of course.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, yep. Okay, and now we'll get on to department reports. Animal Control Officer, I have the, Brenda's going to report that.
Yeah, this is from Stephanie. It's always interesting, isn't it? So this is for February. At large, there were two. There were three wildlife, a possum in a front yard, a raccoon in a garbage can, and a skunk in a garage. And, let's see, with respect to unlicensed dogs, 48 recalled, everyone from... And, uh, let's see, with respect to unlicensed dogs, 48 recalled, recalled, everyone from last month who didn't license their dog. And, um, one cat was taken from his home and given to a rescue when it really had an owner. So, they assisted the Red Hook Police Department on the return of the cat. She was busy.
Thank you, Brenda. Okay, then. Does anyone have anything from the assessor?
No.
Phil does. Phil does.
Yeah. We had met with the assessor, actually twice in March, and reviewed his report to the Town Board at their last business meeting. And so, Brenda and I had it with him. We submitted the results of that interview by mail out to the supervisor, and there's scheduled this Friday, another meeting with the supervisor, myself, and the assessor. His report for March is that simply they continue to work on our annual update reassessment for the current role to be published May 1st, 2014. So, that's the report by the assessor. He's still working on that. He had informed the board, as you know, that he would not be meeting the state standard to submit a reappraisal reassessment for 2014, which would have resulted in the towns being able to apply for a, an incentive rebate, or if that's the word that's used, but around $5 per parcel. We did not meet the standard. So, that's a concern, and we're trying to understand why that happened. But in the meantime, the revaluation is continuing, and, and the goal now is to have that tentative role done by May 1st.
That would be good. Thank you, Bill. And I don't have anything here from the attorney. Do any of you? Okay. I don't have anything from the business manager. I do have something here from the budget officer. Now we'll read that. This is from Rose, of course, addressed to us. "I have started to work on updating the capital expenditure five-year plan. As a first step, I have asked the involved department heads to review their requests for 2015, as well as add their new items for the year 2019, if appropriate. We will also review all items requested with a fresh eye to need, especially in view of the budget constraints that the town will be facing in the near future. The second part of the request is to complete a new form for each item requested, which will be kept on file for each future year. This form states which item is to be replaced and elaborates on why the replacement is necessary, you know, cost of repairs, state of old equipment, et cetera. It also addresses whether the item is available on state contract. This process should establish a more formal method of review each year in order to determine the need for capital expenditures." So, that sounds good to me. Building Inspector, I have that report here in the package, unless anyone else has it and would like to read it, otherwise I'll just go through it quickly. Want me to do it, guys? Okay, the, um, perimeter totals by type and status. One new commercial, one deck porch, one miscellaneous, four renovations, one shed, and one tank, for a total of nine. Inspections, there, Steve, Steve Cole performed 32 inspections, and Bob, you know, works part-time now, did, did one inspection. Complaints, we had two complaints, and they were solved and closed. Certificate status, 16 certificates were issued. And that's, that's it for the Building Inspector's report for the month. Grant application. Does anyone have any updates on any, any grant applications?
I attended a workshop today for the Transportation Alternatives Program Grant, Grant Opportunity, and actually, four of us from the town attended, so we may be asking for, making a recommendation or asking to perhaps reapply for funding for the sidewalk.
Hmm, okay. Good. Thank you, Brenda. And highway, I have written down that Harry's here to report that.
Yeah, the highway, the obvious thing is to say, we use quantities of sand and salt this year. I'll mention that in the, in the purchasing report. And the one, the one issue to move forward with the highway operation is to replace one of the larger pickups, a 550, which is, described by Teresa as the work loss of the highway department, because it's used year-round, summer and winter, for all of the peripheral aspects of the highway operations. It's, it boils down to, it's big enough to do hard work and small enough to get in and around the town. So, it plows the smaller roads and tows the big trailer to tow the heavy equipment around in the summer, et cetera. So, that's what's on the agenda at this point in the highway department.
Okay, and that the present one's pretty old, too, isn't it?
Yeah. Yes, the other one, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually 14 years old. It says on here.
And that's 14 tough years, too.
Yes, yes. Yes, used all this every day.
That's good, yeah. Okay. Police report, I have the Dutchess County Sheriff's report, it says, I report that there's, we've got, okay, this is for the, for the month of January. I'll just go through the week. We have, all Sundays, we have eight incidents, eight on Sunday, eight on Monday, nine on Tuesdays. These are handled by the Dutchess County Sheriff's Department, of course, nine on Wednesdays, 16 on Thursdays, 14 on Fridays, 12 on Saturdays, with a total of 76 incidents handled. And they varied from disabled vehicles, burglaries, fire police responses, you know, parking complaint, and so on and so forth. And then for February, the total number was 83, with the Friday being the highest number. Thursday was the highest number in January, Friday in February. It's interesting. You wonder which day of the week they have, and what incidence of reports.
I would have thought it would be Saturday.
Yeah, I would have also, but it's, it was up there, but less, yeah. Monday was, Monday was the quietest of hits, seems. And they're all similar to, one missing person, 15 property checks, suspicious activity, and so on and so forth. And that's what I have for the police report. I don't believe I have a Red Hook Police Report, unless any of you folks would have one in your packet this evening. No, I don't. Okay, then the next item would be the purchasing. Then, Harry, you want to do that?
Yeah, I have a report from, from Ted. He's been actually very busy. I've seen him almost dally here, early, early in the year, and mainly putting out many purchase orders, catching up with the, the materials we need, and keep the government moving. It is, most, most activity has been with the highway department. We spent almost $20,000 on additional salt for, at the beginning of the year, which everyone, I'm sure, can understand, understand that. He was also working for the first few months on arranging a contractor for our Highway Credit Services grant, and, and a consultant to do that. We're, we're in fact having the kickoff meeting on that, that, that grant was, was contracted out, and we'll have our kickoff meeting next Tuesday on the second, uh, Wednesday on the second, here in this room. And everybody's invited.
Thank you, Harry. Water Department, we've done that already. Hank was kind enough to make an appearance and give us that. Then I have the committee reports. Ag and Open Space?
Well, the Ag and Open Space Committee elected to waive their meeting last night in order to meet with the Zoning Review Committee, and they're going to meet as a joint committee meeting on April 10th, Thursday, at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. And they will have a presentation by the Ag and Open Space Committee to the Zoning Review Committee on the subject of agricultural offenses.
So, we might finally solve that problem, though?
I think, I think we're scheduled to. So, that's on the agenda.
Regardless, that would be a good thing, yeah.
And hopefully, I'll have a report by the end of April as to how that went.
Oh, good.
Been on the agenda for how long?
A long time.
Yeah, well, anyways.
Well, discussion's a good thing.
Good discuss.
Yes. Community Preservation and Farmland Protection Committee. I don't have anything here. Have they had a meeting? I don't think they've had any business, have they? No. And then the CAC, Bren?
Yes, we have a report from Lori. She is announcing about the Ruth OJ Scholarship. College-bound seniors interested in majoring in Environmental Studies are encouraged to apply for the $500 Ruth OJ Scholarship. It's due in April. Contact Mrs. Killian at 452-3077, or visit the Community Foundation of the Hudson Valley website, which is C F H V N Y dot org. And she's talking about the amphibian crossings. In the next week or two, evening weather conditions will be prime for local amphibians to come out and travel over land to lay their eggs in woodland pools. They all come out at once on the same few wet, warmish nights. Frogs and salamanders don't move very quickly and are very vulnerable to traffic. You can help by volunteering to be an amphibian crossing guard. Whittaker Land Trust and the BEC's Hudson River Estuary Program are bringing together volunteers to assist in migrating amphibians and to learn more about their movements. Volunteers are called on the first wet night above 40 degrees to trek out with flashlight lights to help frogs and salamanders cross the street. This is a great family activity and can take as much or as little time as you like, even 15 minutes helps. Red Hook has nine known crossings where volunteers will be helping the amphibians cross the road. Contact Lori at 758-3459, or LoriHuston@gmail.com to volunteer. And please be alert on rainy evenings in the next month from 7 until 11:00 PM. If you spot a salamander, let us know when and where. Their next meeting is April 9th.
That's a good thing. I do hate to see them squished on a road, you know?
Does that include turtles?
Yes.
It does. You see them, it's hard to see the salamanders.
Salamanders, the frogs, you can see them by jumping, you know?
Turtles usually are during the day.
Well, that's true. I've seen, I've seen a few squashed ones, but I've seen people stop.
I've pulled, I've gotten out and taken them off the road. Even a snapping turtle, and they don't like it.
The snapping turtles, though, those, you know...
I said, I gave my distance, but I gave them a push.
I don't care for the snappers much. They'll just wipe the frogs out in the pond in no time. Baby ducks, you know?
And the baby ducks, yeah.
They're just, snappers are tough, but, anything else? I guess, I guess my heart lies with the salamanders, frogs, and the regular turtles, not the snappers. Yes. Snappers don't need any help, you know? Anyway.
There was one on Kidd Lane that was the size of, I swear, a tank.
Oh, they're big and tough, yeah.
I mean, I got him, I got out and pushed him with, with some effort, just to clear the road.
I hope you did it with a stick or something, or your foot, not your hand.
I did it with my foot from a ding. I pushed and jumped. And he didn't like it. But there was traffic backed up, he had backed traffic up.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. I just, I even, I can't stand this.
You take out your tires.
It's not to hate more than to see like a squished turtle way on the edge of the road where somebody, you know, intentionally hit it or something, not just even, even a snapper, but... To move on, the Design Review Hamlet Committee, I don't think they've met, have they?
No.
Disaster Preparedness, I don't believe I, I don't think they've met either, unless any of you guys know them. The EDC, I don't, have they met?
Yes, we had a meeting this morning.
Okay.
And the, the discussion this morning was about putting a website, starting a website for what's happening, the title being, or the, and the mission being, what's happening in Red Hook? So, when someone's coming here for a weekend, or whatever, or anybody, or someone in town, you just, you just go on the website, what's happening in Red Hook, and apparently there is, the software is available, and it can, can be managed by them, put on, put on the website. We can put a link to our town website. So, if you go to the town website, there, one of the, one of the buttons you could push is what's happening in Red Hook, and it'll tell you, put down the date, you go to visit Red Hook, and it'll tell you everything that's happening.
That's good.
And that, that's on the agenda for, to be done very quickly.
Sue McCann doesn't know that. I rely on newspapers and things like that, and I find the Observer's pretty good about telling what's going on.
This'll be updated, and it'll be, and the chamber and everyone is, is, you know, anxious to do this.
Sounds good.
And Dan Budd was one of the driving forces behind it, as well as, and he's very active on the EDC. So, that was this discussion this morning, and I'm assured then they would have the support of the, of the town, right?
Sure.
Of course. We're all in agreement here.
Yeah, sure.
The Intermunicipal Task Force.
Yeah, weekly meetings, uh, in February, March, the task force discussed with development officials the projected traditional neighborhood district to be proposed along Old Farm Road in the town of Red Hook. The issues raised involved water sources and mechanisms for providing water for the new development, operation, maintenance of the system, and whether the town of Red Hook should create a water district to encompass the new development off Old Farm Road. And again, that was the subject of the report by Hank Van Parries tonight in the Water Board. The task force also, by consensus, agreed that the research by historic Red Hook to review the 48 historic parcels from the 1992 survey of the town of Red Hook historical features, and the 85 parcels that are listed from the 1987 Dutchess County Inventory of Historical Features in, in the town of Red Hook, that that research be extended, because more time is needed to complete the further research. They want to use GPS to assist, and they have to coordinate with the New York State Office of Preservation, Historic Preservation, HIPAA. The task force, therefore, is now reviewing a draft prepared by Green Plan Inc., which is dated March 20th, 2014, of a proposed local law to regulate designated historic structures in the town's historic landmark overlay district, the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District in the town, and within the hamlet zoning districts in the town. The regulation of that proposed zoning would apply to alteration, demolition, and new construction of, of regulated structures. So, that's continuing effort.
Thank you, Bill. The next one I have is the Rec Commission. Is that you again, Bill?
No, that's me.
I do have it, no, I think Harry.
That's me. Well, no, no, I'm not going to go over the whole, the whole thing. We were, we finally managed to get back in the rec park yesterday. It took all but a bulldozer to clear the ice away from the, from the entrance driveway, and the, the staff has started, as of yesterday, to work on preparing the rec park for use. It's really a ways from that yet. There's ice everywhere, there's ice on the tennis courts, and we're going to need some, some help from the weather to, to move this along and meet our normal schedule. We're, we're behind, and, but working hard to, to meet, to meet some deadlines so the school can use it, and start, start the kids with tennis, which is not operational now, but we have a plan to get it all done. And I'm working, the Rec Commission is also working on a, a new summer program for the kids who will go to summer program for the, the normal five, six-week summer camp program, and that will be put together and, and promoted, and there'll be publicity explaining when, where, and how in, probably within a month.
Good, thank you, Harry. Did they think about speaking to the big guy up, up above about this polar vortex thing that's been holding us up?
You think they, you think they have the, I don't, I haven't, I've tried, it hasn't worked.
Doesn't work, no. St. Margaret's Committee. They met last night, and a couple things in their, in their meeting, they, you know, they're still looking for a couple new members. Patty Haster from Hannaford, who we had proved, they're still on the committee, but she may be moving to Buffalo, they told me. And there's another member that hasn't really attended in a long time, and I said, "But then you should communicate with that member, see if they're still..." then you should communicate with that member, see if they're still interested, and let us know what the outcome of that is. They had another thing, they passed, they've had the problem, complaints with snowmobilers, and they told me, you know, in warmer weather, there's been ATVs. And so I said, why don't you, if you are all in agreement on the committee, come up and, and make a proposal to us? And they said, like, having signs, they could put no motorized vehicles, you know, or unauthorized motorized vehicles, or something like that. I said, come up with an idea and present it to town board, and maybe we come up with a sign we can, you don't want to say no trespassing, because it's town property, you want people to be able to use it.
It's a public place.
But, you know, you don't want dirt bikes and ATVs and snowmobiles running across it, particularly not across the front porch, is what had happened this winter with the snowmobile. So I don't know, you know, short of patrolling it 24/7, which obviously is not possible, maybe some, some of these signs will discourage some of it, I don't know.
I think a lot of it happens at night, too.
It does.
Off-hours.
But, so they're going to, and I said, if, you know, if that's the case, and, and, you know, the town board agrees on some, some sort of sign, it wouldn't discourage, you know, the, the public from using it, but might discourage us somewhat, maybe, maybe that would help. And the, and they're going to, their next meeting, they said, Mark Malnaro's going to, told them that he would come to their next meeting to help them, you know, discuss and get the, you know, the ideas. They want to do that survey, like a phone survey a few of them, to find out what people are interested in the town, what they would like to see. And then they also had a gal who ripped from Valley Oil last night that, just to talk to them, they talked to them about the heating system. And I said, well, you know, yeah, that obviously is something we have to address. And I, and they, I said, the thing is, you know, we, we got to figure out what, what we have to do, and then have something, we'd have to go out to bid, and if there's grants available, and so on and so forth. Very, very pleasant guy, just talked about what they could offer, what they would do. I said, you know, obviously, if they're going to volunteer to something, okay, but they, you know, that still wouldn't give them the contract, we'd have to do the regular bidding process. And that was, that was pretty much all they discussed at their meeting last night. Senior Services Committee.
I have something from them. Two main issues that the Senior Services Committee for the town of Red Hook are addressing. Number one, Friends of Seniors of Dutchess County is expanding their services into various regions of the northern part of the county, which includes Red Hook. Friends of Seniors provides the older adult community with free basic transportation support services, including non-emergency medical transportation, grocery shopping if the client has no other means to get food, such as family help, visiting, respite for primary caregivers, and telephone reassurance. Volunteers drive their own vehicles to take senior citizens to their medical appointments and to the supermarket. At a recent Senior Services Committee meeting on March 5th, Susan Davidson, Executive Director of Friends of Seniors, spoke to our committee members and elaborated on the various services offered by Friends of Seniors. Attempts are being made to further publicize the services to area senior citizens, for example, with local periodicals. With the discontinuation of dial-a-ride, the Senior Services Committee of Red Hook is looking at the possibilities for Friends of Seniors of Dutchess County to provide needed transportation services for seniors who reside in our area. If you'd like more information, visit the website at friendsofseniors.biz, that's B-I-Z, or call 485-1277. And the second issue is aging in place. With the implementation of various aging in place groups throughout the country to provide senior citizens a network for socialization, leisure, and other needed resources, the Senior Services Committee will be meeting with reps, representatives from the Red Hook Seniors Group, and Meg Kesher, who has spearheaded an aging in place group in the northeastern part of the county. This meeting will be taking place at our next Senior Services Committee on Wednesday, April 2nd, at 9:15 at Town Hall.
Thank you, Brenda. Sister Services, I don't think we've gotten anything with them. Have they met or any good?
No.
And the Trails, Brenda from Trails?
Yes, Howie sent some notes on minutes. At the last meeting, they discussed the widening of Route 9G in the vicinity of Bard College. We support trans, positioning of a guardrail between a sidewalk and the highway. He mentions the tour to Red Hook on May 4th, and they also discussed the possibility of installing a boardwalk as an alternative to rock and culverts for traversing a 75-foot wet area on Aspen Wall Access Trail. And they did that because it would be less expensive, and some fought more aesthetically pleasing. And some had a lead, I think, on getting inexpensive wood. So, I mean, they, they have a $1,500 budget, and it doesn't go very far when you're buying materials like that, so.
No, doesn't today. I like to do a little at a time, though, right?
Yep. You're getting there.
Tree, do we have any new from the tree? I know they gave us a presentation in our last meeting.
Mm-hmm. Just the, the planting day and Arbor Day is April 26th.
Okay, thank you. And zoning review, you really all.
Yeah, the ZRCV's on Thursday, April 10th, 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall in connection with the Ag and Open Space Committee.
Yeah. And that takes care of that. I have no other correspondence or anything at this point. Do any of you guys have any? No?
No, no.
Any further public comment? Now, before adjournment, I would just like if we could all meet in a, in a very brief executive session, just to talk about contracts, the four of us. So I would make that motion if you guys are all in agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's what we do.